I hereby call to order the December 4th, 2019 meeting of the Palm Springs City Council. Will everyone please rise for the Palm Springs Air Force ROTC Junior Color Guard and the Pledge of Allegiance? Good evening. Can I have your attention, please? I hereby call to order the December 4th, 2019 meeting of the Palm Springs City Council. Will everyone please rise for the Palm Springs Air Force ROTC Junior Color Guard and the Pledge of Allegiance? Ladies and gentlemen, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you to the Palm Springs Air Force ROTC Junior Color Guard. Thank you. You may be seated. City Clerk, would you roll call, please?
Councilmember Holstich?
Here.
Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Councilmember Roberts?
I am present.
Mayor Protim Kors?
Here.
Mayor Moon?
Here. Thank you. Next item is acceptance of the agenda. The City Council at this time will discuss the order of the agenda and may amend the order, add urgency items, note abstentions, or no votes on consent calendar items, and request consent calendar items to be removed for discussion. I would like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items any council member would like removed from the consent calendar for a separate discussion and/or vote? Councilmember Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. So my final request to remove something from a consent calendar will be item 1J.
1J, murals? Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to note that I recused on items 1H, as in Harry, and 1P.
Okay, Councilmember Holstich will be recusing on items 1H and 1P. Do we have any... do we have a motion to accept the agenda? Mayor Protim Kors, thank you, and my Councilmember Milton, motion is on the floor. For some reason, it's not showing, but the motion passes 5 to 0. Okay, thank you. JR, we did this two years ago. We still got it working. Okay, next item, report to the closed session. Mr. Ballinger, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public, the City Council met in closed session earlier this afternoon, and there was no reportable action.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Reddy, I don't believe there were any presentations, correct?
Mr. Mayor, we will have a presentation a little later by Mr. Mays.
Okay, next item is public testimony for non-public hearing agenda items only. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council only on agenda items. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Testimony for public hearings will only be taken at the time of the hearings, and there are none this evening. And general public comments, non-agenda items, will be taken later in the meeting. Okay, City Clerk, I see we have four people who wish to speak on agenda items. Four people? Okay. Our first speaker is Robert Finley, and then Darrell Terrell, then Paula Auburn, then Steve Moses.
Talking about item number 2 on the agenda... Turn this thing off. To the city staff, thanks for all your hard work and diligence over the years. To the City Council, thank you for your service to our community. Outgoing Councilmember JR Roberts, thank you for your service and especially for your sense of humor, helping to lighten some of the more droll discussions, and helping those of us attending with trying to stay awake during the longer meetings. Outgoing Mayor Robert Moon, retired U.S. Navy Commander and currently Mayor of Palm Springs. Robert Moon, thank you for your tireless attention to the duties of your office and much, much more. Over the past four-plus years, we have come to think of you as a good friend and one of the few honest officeholders in the nation, as the outgoing and final Mayor of Palm Springs elected by all the residents of the city. We salute you.
Thank you, Red. Okay, our next speaker is Darrell Terrell, then Paula Auburn, then Steve Moses, and Karina Romero. Mr. Terrell, you're all dressed up tonight.
Yes, sir. Well, my name is Darrell Terrell from Moval, and tonight, this election has finally ended. But I want to thank you, Councilmember Roberts and Mr. Mayor, for giving this community a reason to hope again. That's what today is all about. It's about hope. It's that spirit that has filled this room and throughout this community. It's that spirit, that same spirit 11 months ago, that inspired you, Councilmember-elect Garner, in this symbol of our democracy, to take your first steps of a journey to give the residents in the First District a reason to hope again. It's that same spirit that I saw in those folks' faces that I spoke to about your hopeful message. And I'm reminded of that message every time when I look at that symbol up there, and I see the image of the sun. And it reminded me of a story about two centuries ago. As the framers were crafting our Constitution, Benjamin Franklin was often seen in the Independence Hall looking at a painting on the back of George Washington's chair. When, at long last, the Constitution was finally signed, Mr. Franklin said these very words: "I have often wondered whether the sun was rising or setting. Today I have the happiness to know it's a rising sun." Well, two centuries later, we know the sun will always rise on this community. That's what today should remind us all, that no matter our differences, no matter what city council district you live in, that we are part of something larger than ourselves. We are part of one big family by single creed, that we are all in this together. We rise and fall together as one people and one community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrell. Mr. Mahia, my speaker list on my computer screen went blank. I can't see who the next speakers are. Okay, they're in the back. Okay.
Well, I hope it's me.
Yeah, I know, but I knew you. Hi, Paula.
Hi, my name is Paula Auburn, and I don't know if I want to follow Terrell after his exquisite and articulate statement. But I'm here as co-chair of the 1PS Work Group on Cannabis, because there are a couple of issues on the agenda tonight under the consent calendar. I wanted to thank JR and Jeff for meeting with us a number of different times, and to Veronica for supplying us information. Two questions. I know that the zoning ordinance will be up on December 18th, and that has the guts of what we talked with you about. It's still unclear to us whether the industrial zone is going to be covered by these, and that there will be some separation distance within that. So as you look at going forward on the 18th, if you would take a look at the industrial zoning. Second, it's come to our attention that Grace Garner, once she has sworn in this evening, is not going to be able to make the December 18th meeting. And I would like to respectfully request that some consideration be given to tabling or delaying action on that particular ordinance until Grace can be at a meeting. Most of the problem areas are in District 1, and it seems a little unfair to take action or have any discussion during a meeting when she won't be able to be there. I may be a little off-base asking for that, but I'd like to have you at least consider that. That's all I have to say. I just want to thank all of you for your good work, and I've been in public service for a goodly number of years, and it's been my pleasure to work with many, many, many honest and dedicated public servants.
Thank you, Paula. Our next speaker is Steve Moses, and then Karina Romero. Ms. Romero will be our last speaker unless someone else puts a card in.
Good evening. As the mayor said, I'm Steve Moses. I was going to say a whole lot of praise and wonderful things. I've heard them all said a few minutes ago. There's nothing I can add to that except my gratitude as a resident of this city for the job you all have done, and warn you that we expect you to do that well and better in the next several years. But we thank you for your service. We thank you for your commitment, and we thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you, Steve. Our next speaker is Karina Romero.
Good evening. My name is Karina Romero. I'm here on behalf of High Road Consulting Group. We're based in Desert Hot Springs. I just wanted to say thank you for all of your time throughout this process regarding the cannabis regulations. Thank you for welcoming the cannabis businesses into Palm Springs and investing the time in working to design regulations that are good for both your residents and business owners. We know from the city's odor consultant in the last City Council meeting that with these new changes, Palm Springs will have one of the toughest odor control regulations in the country. These changes to the odor control regulations will create more challenges for current and future cannabis businesses in Palm Springs, and some might be discouraged to come to Palm Springs. But we look forward to seeing how this goes and how your strict regulations will affect cannabis regulation efforts in other jurisdictions in the valley such as cannabis. for a goodly number of years, and it's been my pleasure to work with many, many, many honest and dedicated public servants.
Thank you, Paula. Our next speaker is Steve Moses, and then Karina Romero. Ms. Romero will be our last speaker unless someone else puts a card in.
Good evening. As the mayor said, I'm Steve Moses. I was going to say a whole lot of praise and wonderful things. I've heard them all said a few minutes ago. There's nothing I can add to that except my gratitude as a resident of this city for the job you all have done, and warn you that we expect you to do that well and better in the next several years. But we thank you for your service, we thank you for your commitment, and we thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you, Steve. Our next speaker is Karina Romero.
My name is Karina Romero. I'm here on behalf of High Road Consulting Group, we're based in Desert Hot Springs. I just wanted to say thank you for all of your time throughout this process regarding the cannabis regulations. Thank you for welcoming the cannabis businesses into Palm Springs and investing the time in working to design regulations that are good for both your residents and business owners. We know from the city's odor consultant in the last City Council meeting that with these new changes, Palm Springs will have one of the toughest odor control regulations in the country. These changes to the odor control regulations will create more challenges for current and future cannabis businesses in Palm Springs, and some might be discouraged to come to Palm Springs. But we look forward to seeing how this goes and how your strict regulations will affect cannabis regulation efforts in other jurisdictions in the valley, such as India, who is looking at, you know, cities here in the desert as to what regulations are working and what isn't working for them. But we'll keep our eye on it along with you guys, and we look forward to evaluating this in the future. And thank you, Councilmember Roberts and Mayor Potemkour, for everything you guys have done, and even the Cannabis Subcommittee meetings, those have been very helpful and very knowledgeable. And I see such a community bonding here with your residents and you guys, and it's honestly really beautiful to see. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mahia, do we have anyone else who wishes to make nice comments about JR and me?
No other -- no other speakers.
Oh, well, okay. Well, then, we will regretfully close the public testimony. Okay, next item, City Council Subcommittee and City Manager's Comments and Reports. This time is set aside for the City Council to provide additional general comments, reports, and announcements. Additionally, this time is set aside for the City Manager to update the City Council on important items initiated by staff or previously requested by the City Council. Dr. Ready, anything?
Mayor, don't have a formal report this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember -- Mayor Potemkour.
Just a short announcement. Thank you, Mayor. Just to let everyone know that tomorrow at 6:00 PM, we'll be meeting at the Convention Center to do our conformity report on the tribe's proposal for the new arena. I think we're the only government entity that is going to be doing any public input on this, so it's really an opportunity to share concerns. Our staff report's out and really addresses issues that the city is going to discuss as far as mitigation, issues regarding parking and traffic and public safety costs. It is not on whether we want the arena built or not. This is on tribal property. They're a sovereign nation, but it's really on the mitigation that we want the tribe to be considering and working with us on. So I hope people will come tomorrow and share their opinions. You can also email us or email the City Clerk to get comments to the council. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Potemkour. Anyone else? Okay, therefore, I will entertain a mo -- oh, you just popped up. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few announcements. So Commissioner Terry Andrade from the Human Rights Commission has asked us as the City Council to issue a proclamation. December 10th is National Human Rights Day, and to celebrate that in Palm Springs, since we have an incredible human rights commission that does important work on human rights and civil rights for all in our city. And so on their behalf, we'd like to -- I'd like to request that we issue a proclamation to honor them and National Human Rights Day in the city of Palm Springs and our commitment to protecting and promoting fundamental rights and freedoms for everyone in our city. I just -- one other announcement, unless you're going to announce the Festival of Lights Parade and our tree lighting ceremony. Mr. Mayor, do you want to do the honors? So this Friday is our holiday tree lighting ceremony at Francis Stevens Park. It's an incredible community event. We hope that you'll join us. Usually there's hot chocolate and some snacks and activities for kids, so hope to see you there. And then this Saturday is our Festival of Lights Parade, our 27th Annual. So we hope that you'll come in and join in the fun with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Holstidge. Anyone else? Oh, Councilmember Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to do the -- my final Subcommittee Report on the Plaza Theater, unless you'd like to do it.
Oh, please.
Okay. So I just wanted to say to the City Council, just give you a little update on where we are, and then request your direction for the future of the theater. So currently, the theater's doing well. We're getting ready to start the season with some events like Nancy Sinatra, and we've got a number of other things brewing, and we've got some other irons in the fire. Obviously, the Steering Committee has just come back, and we're just kind of gearing up again for the season, and we're excited. Currently, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think we have about $350,000 committed to the project already, which we're thrilled about, considering we hadn't really launched the fundraising programs yet, and it's a good start. It gives us some seed money to work with as well. I have -- you know, I will, at the council's pleasure, stay on as a citizen to continue chairing the Steering Committee as co-chair with Rob, if the council wants that, and Rob has expressed interest in doing that as well, staying on as a citizen. We would like -- we would like at least a council liaison. I have asked Jeff if he would be considered doing it because of proximity. And what else did I want to tell you? I would also request that council approve funding for a sponsorship, a sponsorship broker or sponsorship fundraiser to assist us for the corporate and other sponsorship-type dollars that might be available for the theater, and I would ask you to consider that. And that's really all, unless, Rob, I'm forgetting. Well, yeah, and I should say -- well, and two other things. Rob and I will be doing this, obviously, at no charge, that we will be unpaid volunteers for this.
It's like being on council.
It's just like being on council.
Yeah, it's, you know, obviously hopefully--
Except without the dry cleaning bills.
Yeah, except we'll now pay for our own dry cleaning. Exactly. So I wanted to state that. I think that's important for the record, that we're doing this as a volunteer. Our entire Steering Committee is volunteer as well, and we intend to keep it that way. And I'm also excited to say that we recently, as I mentioned earlier, Nancy Sinatra's coming on during Modernism Week, and I think we're completely sold out on that event, at almost 700 tickets. So the beauty in that is not only that Nancy Sinatra's coming, but the viability of the theater to help us fundraise is going to be very important in moving forward. You know, there are many people in my life who looked at me cross-eyed when I said I was going to commit as a hobby to raising 10 or 12 million dollars for restoring an old theater, and reminded me that we're not trying to cure brain cancer here, and that it was going to be hard to raise those kind of dollars. But I have faith in our community, and we've seen it before. And I think it's -- I think that's all I would need from the council to move forward, is your desire for Rob and I to do that. So I'm hoping--
And I think the fact that we sold out all those tickets so quickly for this really shows there is a market and a viability for having this theater as a living and useful entertainment venue in our city.
Absolutely, absolutely. And, you know, in case people don't know, the Plaza Theater is owned by the city of Palm Springs, free and clear, and the intention for use is that it'll have multiple uses. But the idea is that it'll be a community theater, and it gives us the opportunity for all types of entertainment and culture and education in a venue that will be far more affordable, because if we had to go out and rent spaces to do the kind of things that we want to do as a city and bring in outsiders to do, it would be very, very expensive. And the beauty of owning a theater is that it doesn't have to necessarily be profitable. It's like another service that the city would provide, in that its real job is to provide a service to the citizens, break even, and hopefully make enough money to do that and also create an endowment for its future. And that's my goal and Rob's goal, for as long as we work on it, are those two goals, is to raise the money for the restoration. We'll stay on as a Subcommittee to oversee that if that's the council's pleasure, but just as important to me is I want us to make sure we have an endowment fund for its future, so that we never have to go through this fundraising process again to keep that theater alive. And that is my final Subcommittee Report.
Thank you, JR. Anyone else? Let me see. Okay. All right, with that, we will then go to the consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar. What's the matter?
Make the motion.
Oh, oh. To consent the calendar without items 1J, and also Councilmember Holstidge will be recusing from items 1H and 1P. Motion's on the floor. A motion made by Councilmember Roberts, second by Mayor Potemkour. Motion's on the floor.
I'm not able to vote.
Mayor, my recusal is on 1T.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As in tree. I don't know all the foxtrot--
1H and 1T, okay.
You know the correct acronyms.
Okay.
I pushed it, I shouldn't.
Okay.
Motion passes five to zero.
Anthony, when your assistant was doing this, it worked fine.
I know.
Okay. Okay, our first item is item 1J, and that item, a request by the Palm Springs Public Arts Commission for approval of two art murals on the north facade of the Palm Springs Cultural Center at 2300 East Baristo Road. Councilmember Roberts, who has always been in charge of all things pretty, has pulled this item.
So I have one question, and I'm sorry to staff before I ask, is that I should have sent this question off earlier. Dr. Ready and I discussed it, and, Doctor, did we find out if we had a unanimous vote from the Arts Commission on this?
It was.
It was a unanimous vote. My one concern, I may be completely alone on this, is that when I really looked at this, it's not shown in the photographs, but when you read the report, what we have are two very different types of murals going side by side on the same elevation of the building. And if you look in the back, on the back page where the photograph is, you will see the two murals, but if you flip back and forth, you'll realize they're on the same wall. And that concerns me, not only for the murals, but just how that will work on the side of a building. So my instinct on that is that it's -- it doesn't work well, to have the one very large mural and then sort of a small sidecar mural. They have no relation to -- relationship to one another. So what I'd almost like to do here, and if there are others that agree with me, is send this back to the Arts Commission to consider separating these two murals.
Do you want to table this item?
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm suggesting.
Councilmember Holstidge?
I had a question on this item as well, and since you pulled it, it doesn't state how much funding the Arts Commission allocated for the murals, and so I would support pulling the item for additional information from the Arts Commission. I'd be happy to work with the Arts Commission to bring back this item and attend the meeting and report back to City Council, but I would like more information about city funds that are being allocated to the mural and in what amount for each mural. I think we need that information.
I think we're just asking for it to be pulled to a date uncertain.
Or table -- table to a date uncertain.
Tabled, okay.
Does the council want to send this back to the commission to reevaluate?
I think you've got two requests. One is to send back to evaluate putting the two murals on one wall, and then Councilmember Holstidge's request to come back with the funding breakdown.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion to table item 1J, made by Councilmember Roberts, second by Councilmember Holstidge. Motion's on the floor. Absent.
At least not in red.
Not yet.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, our next item, I think in four years, this is the first time we've had the privilege of having Chad Mays here, our Assembly Member Chad Mays, in our audience tonight. I was a little surprised to see this. So Assembly Member Chad Mays.
In Palm Springs Live.
Did you bring the check for 10 million?
No. Thank you, Chad.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we just wanted to thank you for having me this evening. This is actually the first time that I've been here in these council chambers, and I'll share with you, it's brought back a tremendous amount of memories for me. I served for a little more than eight years on the Yakavale Council before running for State Assembly, and it's amazing to see democracy, democracy at work. I'll also share with you, the reason why I'm here tonight, is I wanted to recognize your service, Mr. Mayor, and also Councilmember Roberts, for the time and energy that you've put in. I still remember my first year on the council. I was 25 years old, and I remember a county official came down to meet with me and said to me, you know, Chad, if you ever need somebody to lean on, here's my phone number to call. No one will ever understand, only a few of us that are in elected office ever understand the pressures and the stresses that come with running and being elected in office. And I never had to use that phone call, but I'll tell you, I wanted to several times. And I remember after my -- the night that I decided to step down from the council, I cried like a baby, which was interesting for me, because the only time I had cried before that was at my grandfather's funeral. And I realized that the amount of sweat and tears and energy that goes in to caring about the community, it comes with a tremendous amount of emotion. And whether you shed tears tonight or later on this evening while you're here in public or later on this evening, we will all understand. Mr. Mayor, I've got some resolutions here with some whereas's of all the great things that you've done, but I just wanted to say that you came here during a tumultuous time in the city's history. And for somebody who was watching from afar, I was concerned that there would be this corruption brand that would lay over Palm Springs for years to come. And actually, quite frankly, it went away very, very quickly, and it was realized it wasn't the entire organization, but it was just a few people. And for a lot of reasons, you are to be commended for that, to show the strength and courage to be able to lead this organization. So I want to thank you, thank you for that. And then also, Councilmember Roberts, I've enjoyed all of our time together. We've been able to sit and break bread together. And what a lot of people don't realize, speaking of some of that homelessness funding, is that it actually, the seed began with you and I sitting down, breaking bread at lunch once, and you actually brought it up and said, Chad, can you help us out? And I remember the conversation that we had. I said, you know, I wish that I had known this sooner. There was an opportunity for that. And I said, are you sure that you want to do that? And you said, look, Chad, we care about, these are our artist citizens, whether they're homeless or not homeless, and we want to take the responsibility for that. And that was the seed that was planted, that for years after that, I wondered if there's ever an opportunity to be able to help the city of Palm Springs. It all began from that conversation. And finally, since I'm here, Mr. Mayor, with the rest of the council, you guys and me come from two different parties, but I have enjoyed our relationship together. In fact, I feel like our relationship is probably stronger than many of the other cities in the district, and for that, I'm very, very grateful. And then finally, to the new council members that are coming in, Dennis and Grace, this is a tremendous opportunity to be able to give to the community that you love, and you need to cherish every single moment that you are to be able to make these decisions. It's not to be taken lightly. So with that, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Roberts, you guys want to come down? I'll give you these resos.
He's really been a friend of us for the -- I remember when I was first elected, like the first week I was in office, he actually came to the City Hall and came to my office and introduced himself, and we had a great chat. And every time we're in Sacramento, he has -- takes the time, and I know he's busy to have lunch with us or dinner with us or anything, he always makes himself available. So thank you very much. Okay, next is, ooh, next is outgoing Councilmember comments.
And, Mr. Mayor, if we may, before we start the comments, we'd like to play about a three-minute video, if that's all right.
We haven't seen this.
You haven't seen it, but it'll be a fun little retrospective of some photos. So if we could go ahead and roll that video now, please? Thank you.
I'm glad Assemblymember Mays gave us a license to get choked up tonight.
No, I'm just choked up that you can still fit into that uniform.
So, David, anything else?
Show's yours, Mayor.
JR?
Mayor, why don't you?
Oh, please go ahead. I always speak last, you know that.
So, leaving the council is emotional for a number of reasons, but most of all, it's because I love my job, and I love my city, and I love my colleagues. I will miss them every day. I very much love the staff of this city and my daily interactions with them. My colleagues and the staff of this city inspired me, challenged me, educated me, and we're true friends. We have weathered some hell over the last four years. I was elected onto a city council that was, had just seen a major scandal occur in our city, and we, as a council, had to deal with a city whose brand, whose beautiful brand, was spiraling away into scandal and gossip. But more importantly, we were losing the trust of our community. We lost the trust of our community. And that's sad, because there's always going to be cynics, and there's always going to be people who distrust their government, and I guess they should. I guess that's healthy and good. But in this case, the cynics were right, and that was a big loss. That was a big loss for me as a man and as a citizen, and it was one of the things that inspired me to run for my seat. I will tell you that another thing that inspired me to run for my seat, I don't have political ambition. I ran for this job, to do this job, with no political aspirations whatsoever, and it was out of pure love of community and frustration and anger by what I saw we were about to lose. But I have to admit that I have always, in the entire time I've been in the city of Palm Springs, been an enormous fan of Dr. David Reddy. And I have watched his leadership, I have watched him lead, I have watched him get us through, and many city councils before me, some rough times. I've also seen him do extraordinary things with budgets, with staff, but more importantly, doing his job, serving his community. And David Reddy is a citizen as much as he is a city manager, and you see that and feel that in everything that he does, and he instills that in his staff. And I have never in my life, and I've been around a number of cities, and I've served as a mayor and as councilman in another city, I have never seen the level of work, commitment, love, and dedication that I have from the staff of this city. And I truly felt humbled and honored every day to work with them, and they're a bunch of really fun people as well. We got through a lot of hell with a lot of humor. You know, when you get ready to leave a dais, you can't help but think back on the things that occurred while you were there, and wonder what you accomplished while you were there, and hopefully, you fulfilled the promises you made to get elected, and hopefully, you were an asset to your community, hopefully, you were somebody that your colleagues could respect, and hopefully, you could be there for them as much as they were for me. And about a year or two ago, Jeff Kors and I sat down, and we were kind of doing our own strategic planning for the coming two years, and we made a list of all the things that occurred prior to that, the things that we had worked on and the things the city had accomplished, and it was a very long list. And I pulled up that list, and I thought about maybe talking about some of those things, and all of a sudden, I went quiet inside, because what I realized was that I didn't accomplish anything on my own. And the only way this city works, and the only way this community works, and works as well as it has, is because of the commitment of my colleagues. And my colleagues are absolutely committed, and whether I disagreed with them, or whether I was angry at them for decisions they had made or things they had said, I never lost for one second my deep love and respect for them. We don't get anything done without them. We can sit here and make all the decisions we want, and write all the policy we want, but that beautiful end result that you see every day as citizens is because they make it happen, and they make it look good, and they make us look good. And that doesn't happen without you guys, without the community. The thing I think that blew me away more than anything of all along the way was the way this community stands up for the things they care about, and not only in talking, but in action. I never saw stronger community support, stronger activism, stronger volunteerism. I never saw in my entire life a joint positive attitude to getting things done. I don't even know how many boards and commissions we have anymore, there's a lot of them, but I can tell you that without them, we'd get nothing done, or we certainly wouldn't get anything as close to what we accomplished done. And I think that amounts to a few hundred people that come and serve this community on a constant basis, just plainly to serve their community. They don't get a nickel, and very often, they don't get acknowledged publicly. And some of them work as hard as I do, and they sit in this audience for every one of our meetings. But what I really wanted to talk about was community, and certain moments popped back into my head, one in particular, when we were dealing with probably one of the most difficult policy issues that I think I've ever seen, I feel safe in saying, Councilman Kors has ever seen, and certainly our community has ever seen, and that was vacation rentals. And it divided our community, and there was a tremendous amount of hostility and anger and frustration that came out of that. And we were able to get past that, because we all came together as a council, as a staff, and as a community, and we solved that. We are now a model for hundreds of other cities on how to handle vacation rentals, and it's working quite well here in our city now. But the thing that stood out the most, and I know this will resonate with Jeff as well, is that there were people in those rooms with us who went to the 21 meetings that Jeff and I held and with the council to solve it, and they had nothing to do with it. People like Jerry Keller, who worked back and forth between those who opposed it and those who wanted it, and the city council, and when Jeff and I were at the end of our rope, having been screamed at, and having been, you know, just bombarded by an angry community and an angry vacation rental industry, it was people like Jerry Keller who got us to quiet down and brought us back and helped us get to the logic, get back to where we were supposed to be. Another thing that I will never forget in my entire life is Chad Mays. So Chad Mays is a Republican with true Republican values, and he is a man that I completely support, hugely respect, and who taught me about, well, taught me that in a time when we are completely polarized as a country, there are still people that are willing to take risks, cross aisles, at their own peril, and Chad Mays does that on a regular basis. But he serves a lot of cities, and he came to a clearly Democratic city, and he helped us with something that we cared deeply about, and it took a tremendous amount of work on his part. He had to trade a lot of credit that you need when you make a request, like $10 million of a state budget, and he stuck his neck out for us at a time when it was difficult for him. And the fact that he came here today was, made me even more emotional than I expected. But we have allies all over, but more importantly, we have a community that is our ally. And if I want to remember one thing, or the most important thing that we did, it was that we won the trust back of our community. We brought our community back from the brink when this city fell into scandal, and I will never forget that. It humbled me forever. It taught me that there is greatness in humanity, and it also taught me what the power of love and work can do, and this community created that, and this staff created that, and my colleagues created that. And I humbly thank all of you for trusting and believing in me to sit and serve for you, and for the respect and love that I've gotten from my colleagues, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, JR. Thank you, JR. I didn't trust myself to do as well as an order as JR, so I actually wrote down the thoughts that I wanted to say this evening. And to the residents of Palm Springs, thank you for granting me the honor of serving as your mayor for the past four years. It has been the honor of a lifetime. These past four years have seen an extraordinary renaissance of the city of Palm Springs, quite unlike anything in our storied 81-year history. Four years ago, when I came into office, what kept me up at night more than anything else was the partially completed downtown development project. My deepest fear was that without aggressive action by the council, we as a city would be looking at the bare skeleton of the Kempton Hotel and the surrounding acres of ugly excavations for the next decade while attorneys battled away. That would have been a disaster for our city. However, our council took aggressive and daring action and worked literally side by side with the Architectural Advisory Commission, and the Planning Commission, and our city manager and his staff to address the daunting challenge. Together, we were able to quickly craft and approve a new downtown development plan that was half the size and density of the original plan. This not only made the project better, it made it economically feasible. Today, as a result, we see our first phase of the new downtown completed and our city thriving. Today, we see the fantastic Capter Center alive and vibrant. That architectural treasure came within a hair's breadth of being demolished to make way for a residential development that, wait, wait, I'm talking electronics, that would most likely have not been built and would have resulted in acres of unsightly bare dirt and excavations for years to come. Today, we see the Town and Country Center moving towards a total restoration that will create a beautiful, vibrant, historically unique addition to the heart of our downtown. That property had been slated in the original downtown plan to be bulldozed and 60-foot-tall office buildings constructed in its place. Recently, we settled with grit construction and Michael Braun to make it possible for not only the Town and Country Center to be restored, but for the remaining phases of the downtown development to be completed. We renovated and updated our huge downtown underground parking garage. We broke ground on a new downtown park. We began the task of moving toward the restoration of the historic Plaza Theater. We created and passed a vacant and abandoned building ordinance with teeth, one that will prevent the demolition by neglect of historically significant buildings, a travesty that our city had experienced far too many times in the past years. The lack of such an ordinance was what had made it possible for the Fashion Plaza Mall, as well as the Town and Country Center, to sit and rot in the center of our downtown for a decade while the city stood helplessly by. No more. When I say "we" to all of these accomplishments and to the countless more accomplishments, I mean not only our city council, by "we" I also include our community-minded residents, our hard-working merchants and small business owners, our Chamber of Commerce, and our many dedicated residents who volunteer their time and energy every day to selfishly serve their city on our 15 critically important boards and commissions. By "we," I mean our hard-working city staff under the extraordinary leadership of Dr. David Reddy. By "we," I mean our residents who voted for Measure J, which thus far has made it possible for the city to invest some $95 million in infrastructure improvements over the past eight years. Our new council being seated tonight inherits some exciting projects currently underway in our city, which we can all look forward to seeing completed in the very near future. These include the new Awkakaliante Tribe of Kewee Indians Cultural Museum and Spa, and the incredibly exciting Palm Springs Campus of the College of the Desert. This new council will oversee the next phases of the downtown development project, as well as the restoration of the Plaza Theater and the Town and Country Center. That's the fun stuff. However, they will also face the many daunting challenges that every city in California currently faces: rapidly increasing personnel, healthcare and retirement benefit costs, homelessness, and the challenge and expensive task of maintaining the city's extensive public infrastructure. I have every confidence our new council will tackle these problems and many more with competence, commitment, and integrity. In a traditional U.S. Navy parting, this is where it gets tough, I wish our new council fair winds and following seas. For myself personally, I'm deeply grateful to the voters who put their trust in me and made it possible for me to have the extraordinary honor of serving as the last directly-elected four-year mayor of the city of Palm Springs. Most of all, I am deeply and eternally grateful to my husband and partner of 38 years, who has been with me every step of the way, supporting, encouraging, and protecting me. He is and always has been the wind beneath my wings. Thank you. Thank you all. As I say, I love you, Palm Springs. So, the next item on our agenda is administering the oath of office to the newly-elected public officials, and for that, I will turn over the new gavel to our new mayor, because I'm keeping my old one, thank you very much. And you talked about the vacation rentals. My gavel has niches in it where... My gavel has niches in it where vacation rental meetings, you may recall, I was hitting it so hard to get it ordered, I had pieces of wood flying around. Something to remember. So with that, JR, I think it's time for us to make our exit.
We're out?
We're out.
Okay, buddy. We'll see you later. So we're going to take a five-minute recess. So the city clerk, no, you already done it?
I haven't.
Oh, you can do the oath first, then we'll take a recess to reset everything. Okay. Got it.
Councilmember-elect Grace Garner and Lauren Bruggemunds.
Please repeat after me. I, Grace Elena Garner, that while serving as a member of the Palm Springs City Council...
I, Grace Elena Garner, while serving as a member of the Palm Springs City Council...
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I do solemnly affirm that I will support and affirm the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
That I take this, that I take, I'm sorry. What did you say?
That I take...
Shorter, shorter.
We'll do it shorter. That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Wow.
That I will well and faithfully...
That I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
Councilmember-elect Dennis Woods. Please repeat after me. I, Dennis Woods...
I, Dennis Woods...
While serving as a member of city... I'm sorry. That while serving as a member of the Palm Springs City Council...
That while serving as a member of the Palm Springs City Council...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance...
And allegiance...
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
That I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you. Mayor Protim Kors.
Okay, we're good.
Please repeat after me. I, Jeff Kors.
I, Jeff Kors.
While serving as a member of the Palm Springs City Council...
While serving as a member of the Palm Springs City Council...
Do solemnly affirm...
Do solemnly affirm...
That I will support and defend...
That I will support and defend...
The Constitution...
The Constitution...
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith...
That I will bear true faith...
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation...
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully...
And that I will well and faithfully...
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now we're going to take about a five-minute recess to rearrange names and seats. And then we'll have incoming councilmember comments and just two short items on the agenda. So we'll be back in about five minutes. Thanks.
So, the next item is incoming council member comments. And why don't we start with Councilmember Garner?
That's very exciting. Buenas noches, y gracias a todos los aquí esta noche. Este es un momento muy importante para la comunidad latina y para todo Palm Springs. Estoy muy feliz viendo la diversidad de nuestros residentes y a mi familia y amigos. Hay muchas cosas que hacer en los próximos años y prometo hacer las cosas con integridad y cuidado. Gracias por su apoyo. Good evening, and thank you all for being here tonight. This moment is really important for the Latino community and also for all of Palm Springs. I'm really happy to see the diversity of our residents and my friends and family here tonight. There's a lot to do in the next few years, and I promise that as I move forward with this, that I'll do so with integrity and care. So, thank you very much for all of your support.
First of all, I want to thank everybody in District 2 who voted, and actually, everyone in District 1 and 3 who voted in this first historic election of district elections in the city of Palm Springs. I think there's a lot to be said about that, and I thank everyone for participating in the process. Although Councilmember Coors and Garner and myself may now represent specific districts, I think that we all share a commitment for the care and the well-being of the entire city, and I will carry that forward as I do my duties. I want to send a shout-out to my election cabinet members who helped me get in front of the voters and understand the issues that they were concerned about. I want to also thank all of those who supported me in this long journey to sit up here today. I also want to thank my husband for his unwavering support. Thank you, Robert. As the City Council continues to evolve with new hotels, residential construction, the arrival of College of the Desert's Palm Springs campus, the proposed arena, the Council has a vital obligation to preserve and protect our small-town sensibilities and accessibility, and most vital asset, our environment and natural beauty, all of which makes Palm Springs a great place to live and work. Fiscal responsibility will be a paramount principle I will employ in exercising my duties up here on the Council. I look forward to working with those on the Council and everyone who cherishes Palm Springs. I also very much want to thank previous Councilmembers and the mayor for their extraordinary work in the last four years getting us to the place we are today, which is a fantastic place for Palm Springs to be and a great place for me to launch from. So, thank you to both of them. With that, let's get to work.
First, I just want to take one second and really thank both JR and Rob. You know, over the last four years, I think when we came in and we quickly learned from staff, we weren't walking fast, we were running, and we've been running for four years. And that's the kind of council this is, and I think with our new Councilmembers, Councilmembers Garner's and Woods, we're going to continue to run because there's so much great stuff to do and so much great stuff happening in our city. You know, when you run for election, you learn so much, and that, I almost forgot from four years ago, just the people you talk to at their doors, on the phones, at the house parties, you really get a sense of the issues that are impacting people day-to-day, and it really does impact our work. And so, I really want to thank everyone who opened their doors for me, answered their phones, which I don't always do when I get calls from numbers I don't know, and came to events to really share their views in the town halls, because it's such an important piece of the work we do. You know, this was our first district election, and when we're moving to districts, there's a lot of concern that people would get elected with a few votes, we wouldn't have qualified people running, people wouldn't want to serve from a district, and it was the exact opposite. We have two amazingly qualified candidates sitting up here who are now Councilmembers. I couldn't be more thrilled to work with them. Both of them, with three in one district, four in the other, were at around or over 50% of the vote, so strong support from their communities, and they both had significant city experience. And that was a message that I really took from this election, which was so different than four years ago, and I think JR mentioned it. People are really happy with the direction of the city. There are things they want us to do, things we can improve, things we can change, but overall, people are happy with the government, and they supported people who are involved in their government. They wanted to see people step up and see that experience. And to have two people who are on the Planning Commission is going to be so valuable for us, and to have Councilmember Garner who worked so hard on the districting plan. And districting also worked for the other purpose, right? These elections were a lot less expensive than elections two and four years ago, which didn't happen in a lot of cities in their first round, actually added diversity to our council, elected the first Latina in our 80-year history, which is amazing. And we engaged people who hadn't been engaged before in the process, and that's the most important part of our jobs. So, as we move forward, and for me, the most important thing is hearing from you, hearing from our constituents, hearing from our businesses, and knowing what matters to you, knowing what you care about. You know, when I worked in City Hall in San Francisco quite some time ago, there were less people in public comment than we get in Palm Springs, and there are 800,000 people because we have an engaged community, but we need it to be engaged from every corner of our community. And we all did a better job in the last year of doing that, and we need to continue that effort. We need to build upon the whole goal of district elections by doing the kind of outreach to get more people with different life experiences and backgrounds onto our boards and commissions, because that often is the way that people get onto council, but boards and commissions serve such a great role. And just to make sure that everyone is hearing us, and that includes bilingual notices, and you know, I appreciate your comments being bilingual because that's a big part of our community, and that outreach is so key. So, I'm really looking forward to getting to work. We have very few things left, so bear with us for what will be a very short, and your shortest meeting, I guarantee, in your tenure on the City Council. And with that, our next item is the appointment of the mayor and mayor pro tem, so I'd like to ask for a staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, staff's recommendation is pursuant to Resolution Number 24593 to appoint Jeff Coors to serve as mayor and Kristi Holstich to serve as mayor pro tem for terms ending December 2020. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Is there any discussion or just real questions from any of the councilmembers? Okay, so, we have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Middleton, and a second by Councilmember Garner. Yes, I asked that question.
Motion passes five to zero.
The next item is to review and make appointments to representatives to external organizations, and this is just a temporary, until we can do this full-time in January, but can I get a staff report, please?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, staff is requesting that you make appointments to the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Executive Committee and the Eastern Riverside County Interoperable Communications Authority.
Great, thank you. Is there any discussion or questions from council?
I'd like to make a motion that our new mayor, Jeff Coors, serve in both of those roles that's typically been positions for the mayor of the city.
Okay, there's a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Holstich, and seconded by Councilmember Middleton.
Motion passes five to zero.
Great, thank you. We're moving through. So, the next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the City Council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, we cannot take action on any items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. And so, the first speaker will be Tina Burr, followed by Patrick Weiss, followed by Beverly Greer. Thank you.
Thanks much for hearing our message. I'm here with a group of people to talk about the Salton Sea, and I want to start with my story, is what I'll begin with. So, my name is Tina Burr, and I moved to Coachella Valley from the East Bay with my family in July of 2000. We arrived at 9:00 PM, and it was one of those summers where it never got cooler than 90 degrees at night, and I thought to myself, what have we done? There were cockroaches everywhere, we were being attacked by wind scorpions and other creepy crawlies, and the Salton Sea was experiencing one of its blooms, and what had we done? Well, what we did was we moved to a small valley made up of little towns that come to be our home. My son had just turned two that spring, so this became the only home he had ever known and ever knows. When I started a great job teaching science and math for Desert Sands Unified School District and made fast friends with neighbors, we built a life. That's what we did. Sadly, my husband died last Thanksgiving to liver cancer, and after his passing, my son and I sat down and had heart-to-heart talks, and I wanted to know what he wanted to do. And he said passionately that he wanted to stay. I thought, okay, we'll do that, but I'll need to get involved to make sure that things around here get fixed. Over the years, in our classes, we studied the Salton Sea and even had some of our students complete science fair projects about the sea. Over the years, we have watched it shrink and become familiar with its problems, but now it is becoming more than just problems. The situation is dire and needs to be addressed quickly. The Salton Sea is part of our home, and it is in need of our help. This crisis is not political, it's environmental, but more important, it's about our families, friends, most importantly, about our children and their future. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Patrick Weiss, followed by Beverly Greer and Phyllis Nunez.
Congratulations to the new members of the council and returning members, of course. My name is Patrick Weiss, I live in Palm Springs. I'm also concerned about the health of the Coachella Valley as relates to the Salton Sea. As time goes on and the Salton Sea dries up more, there'll be more dust and possible more health concerns for the rest of the Coachella Valley, not those just living next to the Salton Sea right now. About 10 months ago, I was diagnosed with valley fever. Fortunately, I was asymptomatic, and I was treated for six months with fluconazole. And to my surprise, valley fever is not uncommon in the Coachella Valley, including in this area. And my concern is also that if we do nothing to prevent the Salton Sea from drying up and the dust and everything, and mildew that can be blown this way, that the epidemic of valley fever and other health concerns will affect us, along with climate change too, that can hamper things more. So, I'm asking the council to write a letter to support the recent declarations of the emergency for air and water pollution at the Salton Sea by Imperial County. The Salton Sea Authority will be voting on this at their next meeting on Thursday, December 19th, at 10:00 AM, so I encourage you to write letters to this committee. Thank you.
Next speaker is Beverly Greer, followed by Phyllis Nunez and Chuck Parker.
Hi, everybody. I'd like to say a special congratulations to those of you that are new on the council, and I want to introduce Jonathan Caldwell, who is my associate at the Neuro Vitality Center. For those of you that have not visited us, I hope that you all will in the future, and we thought this was just a great time when you're undergoing such change on the council, that we filled you in on also the changes that we're doing at the Neuro Vitality Center. As of about two or three weeks ago, we are now a fully licensed and certified, community-based adult service provider, which means that in citizens of Palm Springs and the local area, we'll be able to get adult daycare services for any kind of chronic illnesses, for people with dementia, Alzheimer's, particularly those people that need that additional help in our community. We have for many, many years, of course, specialized in neurological care, and we feel that as the next step, what I call the evolution of care, is basically we needed to start looking at how we deal with our community members that have challenges in dementia, Alzheimer's, stroke-related, AIDS-related, all of the things that are coming down the pike at us that we keep hearing about. It's such an important thing that there is a place that you know, there is a place where the people will be safe, where they're treated with respect, with dignity, and that hopefully, we can help them to grasp and be able to hold on to that part of their life that gives them the greatest amount of pleasure. I look forward to having each of you come over and visit us, seeing all the new changes that we have, and if we can be of any help, you know where we are, we are neighbors. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Phyllis Nunez, followed by Chuck Parker and Jeff Dingan.
I'm here also in support of the emergency statement that was being put by the Imperial County, and we're hoping that this moves forward also to the idea of importing ocean water, because this is, for us, the most scientific approach. We need to cover the dust that has been, that has over 100 years of pesticides, munitions from target practicing, and raw sewage that has escaped into the Salton Sea. We need to think about detoxifying, neutralizing, desalinating this water, and I just want to compliment the Board of Trustees at College of the Desert that passed the solution to import ocean water as a scientific method to solve this problem, because education, you know, they're the ones that are going to build our future by educating our children to be the future scientists that are going to come back and have to face all of this disaster, and we have to support them as much as we can as adults. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck Parker is next, followed by Jeff Dingan and Mary Jane Sanchez Fulton.
Good evening. The city clerk has got a packet of information for each one of you. Our coalition, the Salton Sea Coalition, spoke to the council last year about the Salton Sea, and I'd like to, it's our first opportunity to speak to the two new council members, so the main thing we're here about is the fact that if you go to any of these meetings about the Salton Sea, what strikes you immediately is that how slowly everything moves. Nothing happens, there's so many laws requiring permitting and everything else, it's like you've entered a different universe of time. So, that's why we think this declaration of emergency, the two of them, which are copies are in the packet by Imperial County, is a key part of the solution, because if the governor will endorse that, then it will allow them to cut through and expedite those processes so that we can actually get some projects built down there to mitigate the dust and then build some habitat and so on. The Salton Sea Authority is made up of five different agencies, and they're going to be meeting to discuss this question. It was brought up at their last meeting, but the board was divided, so they put it off until December 19th, and so, we're asking council members to write a letter, and the addresses are here, because there's probably not time for the council to vote on a letter officially from the council. So, we urge you to attend the meeting of the Salton Sea Authority on December 19th, Thursday, at 10:00 AM, at the offices of the Coachella Valley Water District at 7:00. at 10:00 AM, at the offices of the Coachella Valley Water District at 75515 Hovely Lane, Palm Desert. And not that you need this, but there's also a sample letter that you can maybe use to start with in writing if you do decide to write a letter. So thank you very much for your time, and I'm glad to meet the new council people. It's been, you guys have a great thing going here, apparently, because everybody's happy with how you've been doing. So, which is, it must be quite a, you must be miracle workers, because I know it's hard to get people together to do things. So thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jeff Dingan. Is Jeff here? I think he left. Our next speaker is Mary Jane Sanchez Fulton, followed by Robert Mueller. Yeah. And if anyone else wants to speak, you need to put a card in now, as David is doing to show everyone.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Just congratulations, felicidades, councilwoman Gardner, councilman Woods, councilwoman Middleton, councilwoman Holstich, and mayor Pro Tem. Congratulations on your position. Would like to address, it's the first time I've been here in Palm Springs, so I also want to give kudos to mayor Robert Moon for his dedication in helping us expand the College of the Desert here in Palm Springs. I'm particularly here to talk about something muy importante, el día de la familia. Va a ser el 11 de diciembre, desde las cinco y media hasta las ocho de la noche, at the College of the Desert. I'm here to talk about our day of the family on December 11th from 5:30 to 8:00. Muchisimas gracias. Congratulations, everyone. I look forward to working with you from the College of the Desert. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Mueller, followed by David Feltman, who will be our last speaker, unless someone puts in a card.
Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to address you today. My name is Robert Mueller. I'm a resident of Rancho Mirage, but I'm a great admirer of this council, actually. I'd like to bring to your attention something that's going on elsewhere in the Coachella Valley. The Imperial County Board of Supervisors, on October 22nd, issued an emergency declaration on air pollution and, sorry, on November 4th, a second emergency declaration on the pollution of the New River. They sent a letter to Governor Gavin Newsom requesting that the state endorse the emergency declarations. These emergency declarations have the ability of making available emergency funding to cut through all of the bureaucratic permitting requirements that have been typically slowing down any actual construction or remedies at the Salton Sea. And under normal, well, let me just go ahead. The Imperial County is calling for an epidemiological health study, an emissive soil analysis, a toxic air data analysis, and they're also calling for drilling wells for water to plant trees near the affected communities for dust control. Under normal circumstances, we would ask the city to consider a resolution, but actually there's unfortunately no time. The Salton Sea Authority is going to meet on December 19th, and that doesn't leave enough room to create a resolution. So we've taken the liberty of preparing some individual letters, I think, that may be either in front of you now or soon, for you to consider sending letters of support in, supporting the Imperial County measures. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Our last speaker will be David Feltman, unless anyone puts a card in before he's done speaking, please.
Good evening, members of the council. Congratulations, new members. I know those political campaigns are tough. You survived, and won. I was enticed to the podium tonight by Jeff's comment that this is going to be the shortest meeting, and I want to talk about a non-agenda item, so I figured I could get up here before, you know, I had to stay till midnight to make a comment. The reason I'm standing here is I want to talk about the State of the City event, which I wrote to several of you about at the last minute. My bad, but this is not the last minute. I'm getting ahead of the curve here, wanting to ask the council to think through this event from a different perspective, one of true inclusiveness of the community. Access to this event in the past has been very difficult. It's not really been promoted to the public. It's kind of, you have to be in the know to know that there's seats that are accessible. The program itself was lovely this year. No complaints about what was in it, but what was not in it, I have one example, I wish I had a list of three, because you're all supposed, you're supposed to have threes of everything. But the example I have is parks and rec. Something that was striking to me, given the number of constituencies that use parks and rec, didn't even come up at the State of the City address. I think the folks here know that we can do better next year, and I would just urge you to do so and get started on it now so we don't have one of these things like, well, it was already in place, so it's too late, we can't, you know, fix it. So ending on a positive note, please, you know, put it on your agenda somewhere to evolve this so it's a truly inclusive event for all of the city. Thank you.
No other speaker, city clerk?
No other speaker.
Okay, so we will close public comment. Next item is city council and city manager requests for upcoming agenda development for new council members. And your packet is a sheet that lists upcoming agenda items, just so you have it. If anyone wants to speak, just put a request in. Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one request, and it is about the upcoming council meeting. We had discussed with the prior council between December 18th and December 19th, but I know there's an important, and so we had talked about doing December 18th, even though we just moved to Thursday meetings. There's an important community event on the 18th, and I'm also having a medical procedure and probably cannot attend on the 18th. So I'm asking that the council move to the 19th to accommodate that schedule. I know we already have one council member who can't attend, and so it would be nice to have a full quorum at that meeting, the last meeting in December. Thank you.
So let me ask, we could do a scheduling thing, so maybe we should do that now. I think Councilmember Garner can't make that week entirely, so, but can everyone else make the 19th? Does that work for?
Make the 19th, I will, I cannot get here until 5:00 PM on the 18th.
Okay. Does that work for you?
That would affect closed session.
So the other thing I just want to clarify is someone in the earlier public comment mentioned that there's cannabis zoning matter on, on the 18th. My understanding is we voted both of them on second reading already?
Correct.
Okay, so if we can just clarify for folks that, there may be some other cannabis stuff coming forward next year, and at that point, we can, this council can weigh in on cannabis-related issues as well. Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things that we have talked about in the past that I want to make sure that we do continue to work on in the future. We had a lot of meetings regarding the library, and one of the next steps was to, for staff to engage with, I believe, Mark Rios regarding review of Sunrise Park and the potential. But I don't want us to lose the momentum that we have already gained on that issue, and would like to see that coming back. And then secondly, something that has gotten a lot of discussion is the noise in Event House issues and council, or excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Holstich and I have been a part of that subcommittee. Regardless of what that subcommittee ultimately ends up being after, in January, we go through and do our reassignments, I think it's very important that we get in, as soon as possible after the first of the year, public meetings to discuss the noise in Event House ordinance by that particular subcommittee. And lastly, I want to take this liberty to welcome councilmember Garner and councilmember Woods. I got the opportunity to watch both of your campaigns, and by the end of those campaigns, I knew there was, that I personally was looking very forward to the opportunity of serving with you.
I just want to say that I do believe that it's imperative that we look at the planning commission interviews as soon as possible. We're down to a skeleton staff of four. That means if one is sick or there, that slows up our development process. So anything we can do, and along with staff, to make those happen would be appreciated.
Yep. Mayor Kors, could I just confirm that the council has agreed December 19th is going to be the council meeting? Yes. Okay. Yes.
I made a request, I didn't make a comment, but I was just so moved today, and this is a good council meeting, I don't have to speak very much, and I just get to listen and watch the community and our council, and just how in awe I am of our community and coming together in this election and electing highly qualified people. I'm so looking forward to serving with you, and you bring such strength to this council. And I know that we can really accomplish great things together. So thank you for your service. It's hard work, but it's the best job you'll ever have, every minute. I'm grateful to serve the residents of Palm Springs. So to everyone here who is involved in the campaigns and just getting out the vote in Palm Springs, and being involved in the city, and being here at this council meeting, what an incredible community we have here together, and thank you for being part of it and everything you do to make our city great, because really, we serve outside, it says the people are the city, and we serve the people, and we have the best people in the world. So thank you all for what you do every day for the city of Palm Springs.
Thank you. So I have a couple of things. First, I think our future item list is missing a bunch of stuff, so maybe we can take a look at that and...
These are just the public hearings, well...
Just public hearings.
On the 18th, the future item is right, that is not an exhaustive list, correct?
So given, Councilmember Garner won't be here on the 19th, can we put the boards and commission assignments on the first meeting in January so we can get those done? And if there's anything happening in that first period, we can do temporary appointments at the next meeting. If we also can get scheduled the update from Sunline on the buzz, we're well over a year into it. My understanding is they still haven't started the count, they were going to start immediately to see how many people are riding at each stop, and there's just a lot, I've gotten a lot from the tourism industry about promotion and, but it would be good for us to get an update on how many people are riding it, if they do know that, and be able to weigh in and see how they're doing on potential grants to take it over after two years and fund it themselves.
I had a conversation with the executive director on that subject today, and she'll be working with Dr. Ready to schedule that appointment and come in and make that presentation. I've seen some preliminary numbers, they're encouraging, but I want to see a fuller report, as I'm sure all of you do.
Terrific. The other thing is I had asked at our next meeting to bring forward, I don't know if it's an ordinance or resolution, to change the criteria for serving on boards and commissions in the city. And currently, you have to be a registered voter, which means, one, you have to be a United States citizen, two, you have to be at least 18 years of age, and three, people who work in Palm Springs but don't reside in Palm Springs and eligible. So I'd like to see that, but let's do that at the first meeting in January, and we have a full slate, because we think everyone should be able to serve. We represent everyone, whether they're a United States citizen or not. We represent everyone regardless of their age, and if there are high school students who want to serve on a board or commission, they should be able to, in my view, but obviously we'll deliberate that when it comes. And at the same meeting, I'd like to include a discussion that we could vote on about moving all board and commission meetings to 5:30 PM at the earliest, so working people can actually participate and also come and share their views if there's something that impacts them or their neighborhoods. So if we can bring that forward, I'd appreciate that, and that's all that I have. Anyone have anything else? So we'll adjourn with a reminder that we have the special city council meeting tomorrow, December 5th, 2019, at 6:00 PM at the Palm Springs Convention Center. Okay, before I adjourn, I will get back to you. Thank you. Related to the Awa Kianti Band of Kuaia Indians' proposed Palm Springs Arena project, and I think the city attorney has one item to report out.
Yes, thank you, mayor, members of the city council. I wanted to clarify the record with regard to the closed session. There was reportable action, and that was the council voted 5-0 to sustain the hearing officer's determination with regard to the termination of a police officer, and so that should be part of the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.[1757.57]